Okay.
I'm ready. Okay, and hey Dave, how you doing?
Good morning Jen and ladies.
Good morning. Okay, well, it's eight o'clock, we are recording now. Go ahead and call this for the supervisors meeting to order, and I've asked Supervisor Ron Campbell to lead us in the table.
Please join me in the public. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Campbell. Supervisor Gomez has joined us via phone and we hope all is well with him, and with that, we'll go to call to the public, is there anyone that like address the board in call to the public? Seeing none, we will go to agenda item two. The Board of Supervisors convenes as the Board Director of Greenie County Public Health Service District and after order of business will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, a consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agendas listed.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second, is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very, very much, we are convening as the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board Director of the Greenie County Blood Control District and out of order of business, we'll reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, a consent agenda.
I approve the consent agendas listed.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes, we are now convening as the Board of Supervisors. A motion to go into public hearing on agenda item four would be in order.
I move that we adjourn into public hearing for agenda item four.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion, hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I will.
Motion pass, we are now in public hearing. Request by Michael Strain to change zoning district of parcel number three zero zero dash five four dash oh six four A from RU thirty-six rural minimum lots area thirty-six acres to MH dash eighteen mobile home recreation vehicle park minimum lot area one thousand eight hundred square feet. Is anybody like to address on this item? Hayden, do you have any comments?
Would that be during the next agenda?
Oh, yeah, okay, excuse me, excuse me. Is no one, there's no one like to address that agenda item four? We will go out of public hearing, we will go to agenda item four, Hayden LaFloyd Planning and Zoning Planner. Thank you, and sorry about that, I have to get stressed.
No, that's okay. So. Michael Strain requesting to put the mobile or recreational vehicle park behind the county park right there. There was, it was a table at our original meeting, but we brought it back to the commission at our last meeting and it got approved unanimously with some requests from, well, just with some input from the public about getting proper fencing, making sure that trash is taken care of and that the road is not blocked, but there should be no issue with that, so there was the unanimous approval on that.
Okay, does any of the supervisors have any questions for Ms. LaFloyd?
No, not for this one.
If not, a motion would be in order.
I move that we approve the request by Michael Strain to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash five four dash zero six four A from RU thirty-six to MH eighteen as presented with a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sorry, David.
That's okay, and I had no comment, and I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Here no further discussion, we will vote on the motion, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes, we are now going to agenda item six, a motion to go into public hearing to hear the request by Paul and Audrey Flores to change the zoning district of parcel number three zero zero dash one three dash oh six five from TR eighteen transitional minimum lot area eighteen thousand square foot to MH dash eighteen mobile home recreational vehicle park minimum lot area one thousand eight hundred square feet.
I move that we adjourn into public hearing for item number six as stated.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have motion, say, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, we are now in public hearing. Is there anyone that like to address the board on agenda item six? Seeing none, we will go out of the hearing and we'll go to agenda item seven, Hayden LaFloyd Planning and Zoning Plan.
This one, no issues that we would see, and there was unanimous approval from the commission to move forward with it. So, any questions I can answer if you have them?
Any questions?
No question for me.
Okay, so a motion would be in order.
I move that we approve of the request by Paul and Audrey Flores to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash thirteen dash zero six five from TR eighteen to MH eighteen as presented and with the positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I know.
Motion passes, we will now go to agenda item eight. A motion to go into public hearing request by Darryl and America Holiday to change the zoning district of partial number three zero zero dash eight nine dash zero one ten from TR eighteen transitional minimum lot area eighteen thousand square feet to MH eighteen mobile home recreation vehicle parks minimum lot size one thousand eight hundred square feet. You know most.
I move that we approve, well, we, sorry.
I asked for a motion.
I moved to adjourn into public hearing for agenda item eight.
Right. I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion, hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now in public hearing on agenda item eight, is there anyone that like to address the public on agenda item eight? Hearing none, we will go out of public hearing and we will go to agenda item nine. And we'll turn the time over to Hayden LaFloyd, Planning and Zoning Planner.
Yep, same with this one, there was no issues that came up and no input from the public, so they moved forward unanimously to recommend the change there.
Okay, if with that, if there's no discussion, motion to on agenda item eight would be in order.
It's not nine, but.
Is it nine?
Yeah, it's like.
Nine.
I move that we approve of the request by Darryl and America Holiday to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eight nine dash zero one zero from TR eighteen to MH eighteen as presented and with a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning.
I second that motion.
We have motion, second, is there further discussion, hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. We go to agenda item ten and a motion going to public hearing to hear the request by Lenora Lawrence to change the zoning district of partial number three zero zero dash fifty-seven dash oh nine two eight from RU thirty-six rural minimum lot area thirty-six acre to DR thirty-six transitional minimum lot area thirty-six thousand square feet.
I move that we adjourn into public hearing for agenda item ten as presented.
I second that motion.
A motion, second, we are now, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, we are now in public hearing, is there anyone that would like to address the board on agenda item ten? Hearing and seeing none, we will go out of public hearing back in the the Board of Supervisors meeting, we go to agenda item eleven. Hayden LaFloyd Planning and Zoning.
All right, this one was another one that we didn't receive any public input, so there was no issues there. The commission did unanimously vote to approve it and recommend it to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, go ahead. I move that we approve the request by Lenora Lawrence to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash five seven dash zero nine two A from RU thirty-six to TR thirty-six as presented and with the positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I second that motion.
A motion, a second, is there any further discussion, hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We will now go into agenda item twelve and a motion to go into public hearing to hear the request by Hardcastle Trust to change the zoning district of partial number three zero zero dash eighty-two dash zero two eight from SR twelve single household minimum lot area one thousand two hundred square feet to GB general business minimum lot area six thousand square feet. Is there anyone that would like from the public that like to address, I need to make a motion to go into.
Oh, oh. I move that we, I move that we go into public hearing for agenda item twelve as presented.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. About public hearing, now, is there anyone that would like to address the board on agenda item twelve? Yes. You please state your name.
Paul Michael Lonas, I'm one of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I also live in Loma Linda. With the covenants of the subdivision that have been approved by, over the years by the county, it is stated that Loma Linda is to be a residential district completely, and any such changes to that for residential has to be approved by a majority of the landowners inside of the subdivision. Planning and zoning went through that, and it was basically rejected as far as approving the changes to the, to the subdivision.
Thank you very, very much for that clarification, does anyone have any questions though? If not, thank you. Any others that would like to speak on agenda item twelve? Hearing none, we'll go out of public hearing and we'll go to agenda item thirteen, Hayden LaFloyd Planning and Zoning. Plan.
Okay, just like Mr. Michael Lonas said there, we did discover in the process of researching that they do have the covenants on the land there to remain residential, so it is more of a matter of if we, we don't really have the position to rezone that land and say it's own because the covenants would override it, so the commission voted to move forward to deny it, and they, it was not unanimous, there was one dissent, but it did pass to deny it. If I'm wording that correctly, they did not favorably want to recommend that.
They recommended deny it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there any other questions? David, Ron, if not, a motion would be in order.
I had a good question. So in this case, I mean, it's listed as a discussion action for approval. Lack of emotion, kill that? Or do I need to make a motion to deny it?
Well, couldn't we accept their recommendation?
You can deny the approval.
Move, make a motion to deny the approval? Okay, I just want to make sure that I got it right.
Okay, a motion would be in order.
Well, I move that we deny the approval requested by the Hardcastle Trust to change zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eight two dash zero two eight from SR twelve to GB general business as presented and with a not favorable recognition from the Planning and Zoning.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have motion, second, is there any further discussion or clarification? Hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, we will now go to agenda item fourteen, a motion to go into public hearing to request the Hardcastle Trust to change zoning district of partial number three zero zero dash eighty-two dash zero one nine from SR twelve single household minimum lot area twelve hundred square feet from GB general business minimum lot area six thousand square feet.
I move that we adjourn in public hearing for item number fourteen as presented, sorry.
I second that motion.
A motion, a second, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing, if there anyone that'd like to address the board on this?
Same.
Same, okay, is there anyone else? If not, we will go out of public hearing and we convene as the Board of Supervisors, we will now go to agenda item fifteen. Hayden LaFloyd Planning and Zoning Planner.
Same, no, I'm just kidding, but yes, so this is, these are in succession, so same thing with this one, Loma Linda, same parcel or different parcel, but same area. And it was denied with one dissent.
Okay. Well, I move that we deny the approval requested by the Hardcastle Trust to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eight two dash zero one nine from SR twelve to GB general business with a negative recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, we will now go to agenda item sixteen. A motion to go into public hearing on request by Desiree Daniels to change the zoning district of partial number three zero zero dash eight two dash zero two nine from SR twelve single household minimum lot area of one thousand two hundred square feet to GB general business minimum lot area six thousand square feet.
I move that we adjourn into public hearing for item number sixteen as presented.
I second the motion.
Here we have motion, a second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, we are now in public hearing, is there anyone that'd like to address agenda item sixteen? Yes. Same, thank you, appreciate you. Is there anyone else? If not, we will go out of public hearing and reconvene as Board Supervisor, we go to agenda item seventeen, Hayden LaFloyd Planning and Zoning Planner.
Yep, this is the last parcel on the line of those, so there was three, and it was denied by the commission, same situation, one person did not deny it, but overall, the majority.
Okay.
I move that we deny the approval requested by Desiree Daniels to change the zoning district of parcel number three hundred dash eight two dash zero two nine from SR twelve to GB general business with a negative recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you very, very much, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
And thank you for keeping me straight.
Well, you get to talk it so fast, I get excited.
Oh, no. Okay, we will now go to agenda item eighteen. So, we'll turn the time over to Derek appear.
Actually, I'll defer to our clerk of boards for the challenger.
Thank you. Today, September sixth, our fourth meeting for the month. Hope everybody enjoyed their long weekend. Next week will be our county fair, starting with fourteen, ending on the seventeenth. Our next board meeting is on the nineteenth. Small counties, Eko and Wipa on the twentieth. Followed by CSA on the twenty-first.
Also on the fourteen, Ago will be here, Jan Marson. And then South Adams. South Adams.
Thank you.
I am what turns up again?
Yes, at eleven o'clock and lunch will also be session. Thank you for that reminder. I'm going into October, our first board meeting on the fifth. Nancy's fall break is those the first two weeks, the second through the thirteenth. We have the CSA legislator summit in Flagstaff from the eleventh through the thirteenth. With on the eighteenth. And then our second board meeting was bumped back to the twenty-fourth.
What do you want?
Anything else? Going into November, our first board meeting, November seventh. County managers on the tenth. Small counties, Eko and Wipa on the fifteenth. CSA on the sixteenth, and then Eko I saw was on the seventeenth. Supervisor Gomez, correct me if I'm wrong on that. For Eko meeting. Our second board meeting was, is on the twenty-first. And then Thanksgiving is that week, so our offices are closed on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And then Thanksgiving is that week, so our offices are closed on the twenty third and twenty fourth. That's all I have for November.
And I'm sorry I missed October on, in October, the Western Interstate Region. Board meeting is on the first and second of October. I'm sorry I missed that.
And just selfishly, November eleventh is our seventh annual Cody Dino Hean Memorial Suicide Awareness Walk. It is on Veterans Day where it happens on veteran suicide as well, so and that'll be in Marcy.
David, do you have anything?
No, the only thing that comes to mind is on November fourth is the. The town of Clifton celebration and along with the veterans bringing in. That helicopter to minus blood, so I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. Now it's on agenda item eighteen. If not, we will go to agenda item nineteen consent agenda. Both will be in order.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion on any items? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We will now go to agenda item twenty, Supervisory Reports. Mr. Campbell.
Just quickly, last, last week. We were honored to have Congressman Juan Sisquimani come and visit Greenlee County that was. Created by, by Freeport that we were invited to and asked to, to host. Anyway, it was a really great visit. He was able to visit the mine. We had a roundtable discussion with. Other electeds in the, in the. County as far as the, the town of Clifton, the town of Duncan, the school boards. And we had a couple of others for the Farm Bureau and, and categories. Anyway, great roundtable discussion. It was quick getting and had to get him out of here with certain times, so we. We went through that and. We got to hear a lot of points of view from, from. The county as well as the towns and, and the schools and, and so anyway, it was really good that he came to visit us. He knows the importance of copper. There was a great interview that he did after on K T A R. Where he talked about Marcy and, and the importance of copper, which I thought was really great, so. Anyway, that's all that I had, but it was a, it was a really great meeting by the, the attended and came all the way out here to see us, so.
Thank you. David?
I really don't have anything. Just make a comment on. Ron reported that the topic of housing was very, was hit hard on that discussion also.
Yes, thank you. And anything else, David?
That's it.
Okay, well, I, I agree. We don't get very many national. Representatives or senators here and it's always, I've always appreciated those that made the effort to come and, and, and visit. Our county. Also. Mr. Rupier and I had the opportunity to meet with our state senator and discuss some items coming up. In next sessions of legislation that we saw that was important to Greenlee County and, and. That's the only thing I have to report. So with that, if there's, we will. I see on agenda item twenty one, a motion to go in executive session would be in order.
I move that we adjourn into executive session per Arizona revised statute thirty eight dash four thirty one point zero three. For discussion or consultation for legal advice with the Greenlee County Attorney in the matter of Southwest Gas Corporation versus Arizona Department of Revenue and County. Of Pochees, Hila, Graham, Greenlee, et cetera.
I second that motion.
Motion is second. No discussion. Then say all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 We're now going to the executive session.